Rich will be here in a few minutes. He's fighting it out with a construction contractor at home.
All right. Well, I'm just ready. And I probably need to order at 8:07. You do the roll call? Oh, yeah. And do we see people, I think, after the roll call?
I believe so.
Yeah, so I'm gonna do the roll call.
You can just announce.
Bill Spence, alternate.
General seeing member.
I need to know that number.
Rob Wilson, alternate.
So for this meeting, I'd like to see both alternates, Rob and Bill, as members.
And usually say who's seated. Oh. Just because an alternate has to be seated for, if it's a planning board alternate, for the planning board member, you can't seat an alternate for someone who, for a vacant seat.
That's okay. So how about seating Bill for Terry Wade and Rob for Cindy Peeters?
Cindy did it with them.
She did.
But you can't seat an alternate for a vacant seat. That's why you have to say who you're seating an alternate for. You can't seat an alternate for vacancy. You can only seat an alternate for a member who's vacant.
For Bill Larson.
That's why you do want to go to SLF Board and have that seat filled by one of them.
Okay. Okay. We were just doing the roll call. Why do you wrath, Gaver? Next thing is the review of the minutes. Has everybody read them? If not, do I have to take a couple of minutes just to quickly look them over before we discuss?
My error, but line 47 lots doesn't need apostrophe.
What was that? I couldn't hear.
Lots doesn't need an apostrophe on line 47.
Okay.
Line 33. Changes that was or should be changes that were.
In our line 33, probably should say, the planning board went over the changes that we're going over. Line 35, you probably just erase to go up.
Well, it should be to go before the public. Not up for.
You don't even need that. The final draft is set for a public hearing in October. You don't need that.
A question per comment, is October still realistic or is that more like for November?
I don't have, I'm not looking at the minutes, so I don't know what you're talking about. But you're looking at me, so I'm thinking you're zoning your minutes.
You had mentioned that it might be a stretch to get that hearing in October given where we're at.
I think it depends how today goes. Whether we leave with consensus or don't get through it all and meet again next week to get there. I'd like to see you have a public hearing in October, so you have November to discuss the results and see if you want to make any changes and have a final hearing in December. You might not make it.
Line 34. Changes, change needs, or should be changes needed. Line 37. Tara wanted to discuss about, she said word about, oh. Line 38. Redrawing the map and the word, Nancy, come out there. And Bill started stated.
Yes, on line 37, I probably take out, that are sticking out all over the place, and and just say Tara wanted to discuss the odd zoning districts to see about redrawing the map. Bill stated that he has concerns.
Yeah.
That's fair.
About, yeah.
Sounds really about which Bill stated. Sounds like something I would say.
It was something that you said.
Yeah.
It was recorded.
Yeah.
It was a direct quote.
It sounds right.
It was a direct quote. Don't want to be misquote.
Yeah. I would then put a period there and then start out the next sentence with Bill stated that he has concerns about changing the intended use of any property without going through a master plan set. How much, even though he feels things have changed drastically over the past five years. This, on line 41. Period. I don't think we need, and first feels master plan should be viewed, because he just said that.
Oh, okay, same.
Cross that out before looking at, you know, changes to land use, cross that out. No more line 42, the meeting in 43. And you can start line 43 with Tara stated that it is.
Might be better to say Tara stated that there are only three lots that we are talking about instead of it is. Yeah.
And then the follow-up from 44, and their zone.
Yes.
What was that? I'm sorry.
On 44, so then its zone, it would be and their zone, interchanging, say in line 44. I guess on line 47, maybe there will be three lots that are going to be changed, but an add word it doesn't change the use.
I think the word should be that. Not that.
Yeah.
It should be that.
You just need something there.
What do we?
You want the word on 47 to be that.
That.
You're asserting the word that.
After but.
But that doesn't change the use.
Oh, 48.
Yes, on the beginning of 48.
I'll get it on the recording.
It's just right after but.
It's the last.
That, okay.
I think on line 52 at the end, uses to see, it shouldn't be uses need to see.
Yes. Need another verb there.
Yeah. Because my merit, the American English teacher is hanging on. Line 50. Towards the end of that line, uses to see, it should be uses need to see. Other planning board is.
I don't follow what that's saying. We're getting carried over, we can't perform that. Or, and, we need to table this article five, section A uses. It's about no, citizen uses, the one with the, yeah, payable, yeah, so it's article four, section A uses, it's mainly payable.
Okay. Got it. Just forgot.
Yeah.
The confusion is that after the, after the phrase article four, section A, is, should there be a period there? That's what.
Uses.
Well, it's a period after section J. Maybe we see the dash, like after, you know.
What you mean is that the reference, the article four, section A uses.
But then according to two lines down in 42, or section J, period, dash, uses, so perhaps there's need to dash to clarify.
Yes.
Or have it written the same way.
Okay.
Well, if there's no dash there, and technically it's right, you probably should just underline it. So article four, section A uses should be underlined, it's written correctly, and section J uses should be underlined, and there shouldn't be a dash, there is no dash.
Okay, so the great way of writing it is there's a, there's a period after the designation letter. Okay.
But if you underline any, it's easier to tell it's a title.
Okay.
So I'm trying to figure out how to make it more readable, but the town court group, and I'm sure I said it as if it were all one long sentence, but perhaps we could, at the first comma on 67, make that a period. And, board, something. Overbid. Overbid. And it wasn't the town, court was allocated, it was that the, the Gateway Project was allocated, it was approved for.
You're right.
Don't anyone think that this group have the money to learn on? Get future groups attached.
Wait, I'm sorry, what do you go on?
I'm sorry, 68. Overbid, is it, project's been overbid since the town approved 250,000 for the old Gateway Project, perhaps that project. And then after, on line 69, after 200,000, perhaps, period. Then at the present time. It does reflect how overwhelmed that felt. You got the spirit of it.
Dividing into two sentences.
There are three or five.
Yes. Makes it easier to read.
Actually, I think in line 56, it probably should be Tara will go over the zoning ordinance changes and definitions that are up for discussion to make sure the definitions match the ordinance with more clarity and understanding. That's what we're doing today. Then line 83, that's Mark, the planning board now. It's another kind of one-on-one sentence, it's going to be a conversation board at the trail circuit. So then on page 85, after about the use of trails in the valley, period. And then perhaps, since we have the oldest network trail circuit near us, Gates, I would like to sign a loop trail, American Field, just be. Oh, yeah, at least that, I think. Gives it complete, hard on sentence.
So wait on line 83.
Oh, just Mark, let the planning board know.
Let. I told, upper pin, board knows that. And there's two there, theirs, their, yours, is that correct? On line 83, upper planning board know that their, theirs going. You don't.
Oh, I think I corrected that after I made your special copy, when you were going to come pick up. It's just a mind game I'm playing with you.
The old version.
April Fools, if I ever want a complete different one.
Yeah, either that or insert something like since. I think United States, on 86 should be capitalized. Yeah.
Oh, that's my Tara.
And we don't need any, then line 88, we don't need any apostrophe.
Wow, that's correct. Could I?
Apostrophe.
Yes.
I think in 87, after that is going on in the state of New Hampshire, I think get rid of, and to be able to get involved, it doesn't move sense, so just cross that out and just say, what is going on in the state of New Hampshire to be able to get more visitors to our, well.
Yeah.
Don't make the motion, give that to the manager. Thank you. Meetings are, minutes are accepted. As amended. Now, get to old business on, and that's the zoning ordinance discussion, it says in lighting, but I think actually it says the zoning ordinance discussion and the use table. That was the homework that we were sent.
Yeah. Lighting was part of that, that you're working on, but yeah.
I mean, I guess lighting is at the end of zoning ordinance, where are you?
So one thing I did was last night, just type out my notes on what we got done at the last meeting, so that it went off. And I did have a couple of questions on that. Because we didn't get, we didn't get all the way through reviewing the changes on that draft, so I hadn't, I'd made more changes, so we're all looking at the same topic. And just in going through what was decided at the last meeting, I saw that these first two that talked about adding as uses, I didn't have anything in my notes in which districts they were going to be added to, and I could, I could take a pretty good guess and maybe get it right, but since I'm here, but something that users decide.
When you say which district, do you mean which zoning category?
Yes, which zoning district. We talked about adding them as specific uses in the use table, but we can talk about which zoning district.
The easy ones would be VCC1, Special City, and Rec, right?
Yeah, that one I guess.
Maybe we want to increase that.
Seems to be consistent. Everything else is there, yeah.
How does it work with the White Mountain National Forest, can we add that?
I actually have that on my list to follow up on as a topic. And then is it, would they be permitted as an accessory, their accessory to a permanent use in all of those, right? That's how you want to. Yeah.
Is that right? I mean, how does that work? Say, for example, with Amtesa, since they're here now, they're a special event, but they're not necessarily part of anything that's here all the time. So how, you know, I need to discourage any of that type of event.
So how are they hitched to a property of the land used? Explain to me, just.
They're here using, they have an agreement with various property owners to use the land, and they establish their own little self-contained village and flapping and capping and et cetera. But, I mean, REI doesn't have a presence here, and they're not affiliated, except that they work with the, with the mountains, you know, major stakeholder and how they have a relationship with. Is that enough to be accessory use?
Not, yeah, maybe not, because, I mean, that typically would be accessory to something on the same lot, not just kind of other things in town. So you want it accessory or special exception?
Whatever would make it not be prevented, I guess.
Or, or they could just be permitted. And those are the three choices, they can be just permitted, they can be permitted only if they're accessory to something else in law, or you could say accessory or by special exception, I think, yeah, something else, it's like.
Is there any way that saying it's permitted would get us in trouble in the future? Only you can answer that. I don't, I don't have that insight into, you have your pistol ball.
Well, if we grant them a special exception, that's for this particular circumstance that we all favor, then if somebody else were to request similar activity that we didn't want.
Right. Does it have a request, like permit is colonies, and we want to, if we say it's permitted, would that mean that no matter what, if you're group, so maybe special exception, it's more so.
Yes, the nice thing too about the special exception is, and I wasn't so much thinking about whether the people knew or not, but how much traffic, is there an attract parking, make sure they're dealing with the bathroom facilities and that kind of thing. That, you know, looking at the impacts on the community, I think it's something could be huge or it could be manageable.
Yeah, by permitting, you have no control.
Right.
But is there a process, if it's special exception, does it have to go, do they have to go before?
Let's go to the zoning board.
Yeah.
How are they doing it now?
Yeah, they don't have to.
They just come in.
They're just doing it.
They're just doing it. And then, I mean, that's fine, I'm not saying it's a problem, I just don't want to prevent that in the future.
Yeah.
But.
Yes. So who do they, who do they contact now, Lord?
I think they, yeah, have a relationship with the mountain, and they facilitated the various land uses.
Yeah, but didn't they have permission from the landowners?
Yes.
Individually to do that?
Yes, the mountain must have contacted the town, around town land too, and most of them.
What did the town have to say about it? Wasn't it permitted?
I would assume so, but I don't know that it went to like any board.
It doesn't mean it had a zoning board.
I mean, I guess the SLF Board must have been involved.
Yeah, it must have been. We're all in favor of it, but.
Yeah.
So, we're, how much trouble is caused by special exception? And we would have to say, yes, we approve it?
No, it goes to the zoning board, special exception goes to the zoning.
Unless they just argue it's accessory use, right? Which, I perhaps there's a way to argue that, that I'm not seeing, this particular instance.
Special exception? Seems to make sense, it's like the greatest flexibility and.
Right. So accessory use and special exception.
Right, if it's not an accessory to something on the lot, then it needs to go to the zoning board for special exception. And you have a few other things that aren't with the top name.
Okay, I'm in favor of that, because as long as, as long as a group of the town, everybody likes it, there's no problem. If I say that something comes up that nobody wants, but is a problem.
But we, but in that, we have that, those controls in place.
Yeah, let's get a handle on what conditions, you know, with a special exception, the zoning board can say, all right, this many cars and this many porta potties are intended, and then when it gets out of hand, there's a, there's an enforcement.
Okay, agreed.
Right, so does it mean be both an accessory and a special?
Yeah, you have, you have small things right now, that if it's not accessory, it would have to come with special exception. In the table, right now, you have.
Oh, yeah.
First three listings on the commercial are that way in the HTR, and parking facilities in the HTR. Then if it was associated with a hotel or whatnot, you were good, but if it was going to be standalone, then we wanted to see that it would change the character of the residence.
Okay.
All right, just take a quick look at the other things on this page and make sure that I got things right and that I understood, that my notes reflected the, her base memory.
Did we define aquatic centers? That is, we got to the point where we said, we don't want a water park.
Yeah, that's not what this means. This means like a spa, I'm not. We could just take aquatic centers out of there.
The water, with the water park and like kind of the detail is, uh, is excluded from anything around water. Like water venues or whatever.
I understood that. I just, I didn't look at this. It said, what is an aquatic center?
And that, and that's why there's a group, we're looking at this. Um, let's take that out. I think health and wellness facilities is, it's fine without that, those words.
Okay, I agree.
Did we specify which districts get the language for skills things?
I guess I thought you meant you were talking about both previous conversations.
So the same for special events and skills in?
Usually related, often related. Or maybe you don't feel that those need a special exception and could just be permitted. Can I answer that for you? Yeah, those may be fine, just permitted.
Yes, I'm a little hesitant about it as well.
Do we need to worry about defining fitness facilities? Or is there a different way to word that? Is something we have to find or is that, is that obvious what it is?
What, tell me what it could mean that would be troublesome. I mean, it's easy to put in a definition. There's no limit. There are definitions you can have, but I'm trying to think of, I'm not able to think of what it could mean besides.
A new gymnasium?
I don't think you can specify clearly.
But I think it, I think it's clearly. What else could it mean?
I don't know. I mean, it seems obvious to me. Do we have to define everything?
Okay, I think your notes are correct.
Agreed.
Yep.
So there weren't, there weren't any comments on the use table at the last meeting. I wanted to be sure that nobody came up with any, and I also, I did want to follow up on the, I had left hanging a little bit the White Mountain National Forest because I was, I was having some back and forth with the forest service because I'm, I'm actually dealing with the same issue in three communities. And from the perspective of the forest service attorneys, you don't have any jurisdiction over anything on the forest service, no matter what. There's, there are different opinions on that. I'm going to be careful how I say it. What the forest service attorneys suggested for language was this. Uses authorized by the U S Forest Service that are consistent with the White Mountain National Forest Land and Resource Management Plan, U S constitutional provisions and federal regulations and statutes that govern national forest management. And where they're going with the constitutional provisions is the preemption clause. And their take that if it's on the national forest, even if it's a private activity with a special use permit that may not be consistent with the plan, that you don't have any jurisdiction. That's an issue that just usually ends up in court. So.
Uh, comment. So I mean, that language makes total sense. And I, I think it's just, you know, for our purposes, I don't think we need to delve into their definition over their jurisdictions. We just have to account for it because it surrounds our community in this certain land. So I don't think we really have to get in a big debate about that, or do you think differently?
I think the, I think after the statement about authorized by the forest service that are consistent with the plan, I think it's redundancy. I mean, everything we all do is consistent with the constitutional and federal regulations, right?
I think so.
I just, I just fill out parts of done it. And the other is pretty much what I had run by them already. You know, I worked for Coast County Plan Board two that oversees unincorporated places and, and most of the White Mountain National Forests. And there are, there have been disagreements up there of when something is a governmental activity that's exempt or not. And when the plan board should see it. And in an ideal world, the private activities like the MC Hudson, the plan board has a courtesy and, and you know, accepts some input and it, it's just done in a friendly way. But to cover those possibilities where something comes along that you want to have input on and feel you should, I think it's good to have some language in here rather than just ignore the White Mountain National Forest and not have it in your zoning map. I mean, in my land use zoning brain, everything in the community should be on the zoning map. Some way or.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think we have to account for it.
I'm less comfortable with how we left that at the last meeting about, and we were trying to get a lot done in a short time, so, um, didn't really think about it much then. But we talked about telecommunication towers as being a special exception in the White Mountain National Forest. And I, I mean, I think they're going to argue with that one and say they are preempted because they give it a special use permit. Now, you've said they come before the plan. Somebody here at the last meeting said that telecommunication towers.
I've never seen them.
No. So I, I think I would just leave all the other uses silent and put, put in uses authorized by the forest service that are consistent with their plan. But.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, but I thought the only time that we discussed the, or the telecommunication tower was on our agenda was if the tower was somewhere within the boundary of the town.
Well, the, a lot of the White Mountain National Forest is within the boundary of the town. It's not, not in a town because it's in the forest. The, the conversation is that the land they own in your town, you don't get to apply your zoning because they, they preempt.
Okay, that makes sense.
But I mean, I could imagine a scenario where a group of communities takes issue with that. If they say, we're considering a special use permit for a big paralel line or wind farm. Then I could see a group of communities taking issue with that preemption and that being a governmental use. And it being a good thing to have something in your zoning.
So what could we do?
Okay, I agree.
That, well, that's what I'm rethinking because I, I don't think so. Like that would be consistent with their plan. That's why I wanted to, that's why I suggested the language authorized by them and consistent with their plan. I mean, I think it's hard to fight if it's consistent with the plan and you all had input into their plan. Not you all personally, but the communities and I think that's a good tool. So, and that's why I recommended that language and I was glad that they liked that part. But anyway, so that's, that's how I would leave it is just putting in the proper name, doing it as I have on the table I handed out to you correcting the name of the plan. That's my recommendation.
Let's do it.
So any, any other comments on the table? I didn't have any from the last meeting.
Go ahead. I assume that this document is what we're gonna change. So on the first page under, in section I, we're also deleting not just two uses by right, but three accessories by right. So if this is what goes before the town to vote, I know.
Wait, can we just cut to the, in here too? Glad that you read it carefully. It was. So.
I had one.
Yeah, but just, they didn't, there weren't any. We didn't have it because there weren't any accessory uses by right in. We're, they're in blue being added. On page 25. But what looks like I missed is by special exception. What being deleted from I is the special exception for the dormitory, commercial offices.
So it's special exception?
That's what's wrong.
I don't, I can't tell the number that is anymore.
It was three.
Okay. So it's special exception, not accessory.
It's kind of tricky of like, I was such a, trying to think around these corners to write this of. I wanted to, I don't want to show that use changes you're proposing in the table, right? Because people, you said you wanted people to see it in the text. The amendments have to work together, so I'll, I'll need to think more about that, but make sure they line up.
Right. Well, anyways, whenever, whatever else is in I.
Yeah. Cause it, it's just, we're adding accessory uses by right or deleting special exceptions. But then.
We, I thought we were.
This would be removing all of it. So, but if they're voting on this and you're, and that section doesn't exist yet, they're moving it. That's a little bit of a. I've got to think around that corner, I guess.
Why, why would we be adding anything or just, why would we just delete all the old stuff? Why are we adding anything?
Yeah.
Isn't that the proposal to delete it?
Why are we, we're even bothering with board switching sections we believe?
Well, cause that's what you asked me to do and that's what I did. You wanted people to see the use changes in the text. So that's what I did. I, you don't see the changes on here.
No, he's not reading. I mean, we're, we're gonna delete it. We're not leaving. We're just looking at the table. It doesn't really make sense.
So Tara, are you comfortable with deleting it?
This, this isn't where you're making the use changes. This is where you're making a format change. This is where you're making the use changes. This is a formatting. This is just saying, and we're gonna replace those lists with a table. This is where you're talking about the use changes. And when I, in the use, make a suggestion to you of how to carve these up into separate amendments, that I'll make sure that comes out right.
Because it's, so you're saying it's a text where changes are made and should be most visible.
That's what you've had me do.
Right, and translating it to the table is just our, our new way of looking at things.
Right.
The format and what we've changed here.
It was an art, an exercise of consistency. Is that correct? Just to make the table consistent with the text.
Right. But we're limiting the text with a separate amendment. Because what your decision was that you wanted to go to the table even if the use changes failed. People can vote down the use changes, but still say, yeah, we like the idea on that table. For our meetings, we've been discussing the uses using the table because it helps you see that you have the land use patterns that you want.
So you're saying that people can go down both the language and the table idea?
Separately. Those will be separate amendments.
Okay, I got it. Thanks. I did my next question.
Yeah, I wanted to see, I wanna, I do want the bar to keep using the table to talk about the uses. Then it's, it's my exercise in consistency to try to make sure I've matched it. Unfortunately, it doesn't. Yeah.
Okay, um, so on page two. Under residential. So it's a very goddamn horse. His green house, his pool sheds, playhouse, his home photos, garden, garage, his complex. It includes swimming pools and gazebo's for L B R and H T R. But under recreation, you've got swimming pools and gazebo's. And I, and I guess I, I fail to see why. It just seems repetitive in this. They should be out of there and just include accessories under recreation for L B R and H T R. Doesn't. Hate the idea of something repeated because that, that guy is the two that probably happened for finding stuff twice. Something it needs to be. In other words.
So.
You mean swimming pools and gazebo's from that use block there and then down, the swimming pools, water features, adding A under L D R.
Yeah.
And that way nothing's repeated and it's, we're all set.
But I wonder how you, and I think it's still this way from like here are the things you can have with a home and here are the things you can have a water feature with, with the hotel.
But you can have a swimming pool and a water feature in a house too. If you have anything here, you've got all sorts of stuff under recreation as accessories for L B R. It just doesn't make sense to throw in two things up there that are down here.
Okay, so. So we're just taking circles and gazebo's out of the list on the residential?
Yep, and then adding A for L B R.
Everybody can, but.
Yeah, I understand.
Yep, good. Under, well, this is still under rec, for camps for recreational instruction. It really ought to be permitted for. It really ought to be permitted for rec, since we run camps for recreational instruction. So that's missing a P. I guess I had a question, would that be permitted in special specific? Makes sense?
It does. Yep, that was in Phil's comments too. So can those out? I didn't make. He picked up on the gazebo was being listed twice. I think that's the only comment he had that was on the use table versus. Get on through it prior to the last. Thoroughly, not just comments, so. He does have other comments here that are related to people. Let's get through yours first maybe and then move through.
Then I guess my other question is under agriculture, I assume that's state law and that's why all that stuff was.
Yes. It's not how it was explained last meeting. I thought that that was unusual provisions. But. It's state law.
Not, not exactly, no. Is there something different that you would want if it was consistent with? Not, not all communities allow all of it in every district. Sorry, I didn't hear.
Oh, we look at Y and C one.
E, either one.
And I guess I keep the. Special exception. Yeah, because that, that doesn't mean like having a flower bed, that's. We're talking about farming.
Wait. Would it make sense to have. Agricultural uses except for animals be a special exception in the B C and C one? Imagine it was an indoor farming demonstration or something. Could make sense there.
Yeah, special exception, I mean, everyone's doing this, you know, things in shipping containers, right? That are hands-free and held upon, I can.
Right.
Very small footprint, and why disallow that?
Right.
So that would be a certain special exception. This is the raising of animals, we have a five acre minimum. We're going to take up five acres of C one and.
Yeah, I was just gonna take, just take it out of. I just was gonna put the special exception in the first row.
So do you mean you had to be taken out with the special exception?
Yeah, I thought that's what you said, that makes sense. It's not just taking up space, but the issue of what to do with the waste.
What was the, I know.
Zoning of land and the horses around.
Yeah, they did find a way around it for the horses in case that. Not allow the horses, so maybe special exception should stay in there.
Would they hear as an agricultural pursuit?
No, or recreational.
Right, so to me that wouldn't even crop.
You're right, because they didn't need five acres.
They're not, they weren't breeding them.
No. Well, I know, maybe it's.
All right, so get rid of it then?
Yeah.
I think so.
That is five acres.
Shouldn't go so far as to indicate that animals for recreational could be allowed under a special exception? I mean, the horse drawn, they ride, which is something that's really missing and it'd be for us to make it more difficult.
Wonder if you just. Is there something in recreation you can just define or include? Was there in? I've heard discussions about it, but not really followed. Was it challenged whether they could do it?
Well, at one point, the horses were attempted to put in a spot that was bound to be an appropriate, and so that's when the whole discussion started. And we realized you couldn't keep them out because of state law. And certainly wanted people to allow them, but not like. Right next to a few hotels where the smell could affect the guests type of thing, so.
So that's where was the issue of whether they needed to come for a site plan review? That would have been when that could be.
Right, yeah, it was just that.
That really seems like the right place to deal with it. Rather than. Trying to get that far in the weeds and. What any of these activities could include. I think you have site plan review to deal with that kind of detail.
So in theory, someone who wanted to come in here with horse drawn, whatever. Could just come to us for a site plan review, even though it's not necessarily stated to be allowed in any of the zoning areas or.
Well, it would have to kind of fall within one of the categories that's allowed.
Seems like this is like a pragmatic issue or, you know, item. That we want to make sure that we cover here with, again, not really knowing whether it fits in the site plan or not. Because there is a commercial, you know, you know, impact. So I kind of agree where you're going, Mandy, that we should accommodate it somehow, you know, whether it's in recreation or whatever. Make it special exception so it has to come back, but at least we've accounted for it. Makes sense to me.
Or that recreational question?
What if you included it in the recreation center definition?
Yeah, I guess it offers a pastime.
Like you, we just add a phrase there that. May include. Something I'm not thinking right now. Some language that, I mean, it might be a petting zoo or, right, or. Something that maybe it may include last known. He was struck recently or something like that.
Yeah, some sort of wording like that.
And then. That's accessory in the H T R and permitted in the B C, C one, S C and, right? My recreation center isn't permitted in Snow's. That an overstatement?
Yeah, it probably should be, right? Sure.
About sports facilities. There already are sports facilities. Yeah.
Of course, this facility is permitted in special setting.
That one you were looking at as more of a commercial with spectators and all rather than.
He brought in his on. Special city land.
Yeah.
So I think. We've already permitted sports facilities.
So are you adding that?
Yeah, I think that's fundamental to our town. Recreational town.
Right, this just. We started out with just the table of what you have right now and Snow's was really narrow. But looking at that now, maybe. There are other things we want to add there too, like skating rinks, tennis courts. Because the roses are accessory. And sports institutes in the rec. To try to fill those holes, right? Does that make sense? It's just, what I presented to you initially was what you had. Had already. But I think having it in this form does help see the.
Phil had a good point, which is, does it really make sense to let golf clubhouses and pro shops be in B C and C one?
I, I thought that was a good change that you made. Because you're not talking about the golf course itself, but businesses related to it. He asked also, should dormitories be a use by right in B C rather than accessory? I kept sort of thinking a dormitory has to not be an accessory to something. I don't know how I think of what a dormitory is. It's not accessory to something, it's lodging rather than a dormitory.
Dormitories aren't permitted anywhere.
Correct. He asked, why wouldn't a contact desire be allowed on B C, but it is? The top of page four. You're suggesting a first special exception and that, that's what it is.
Well, it looks like he's asking why.
That's how you read it?
Yeah.
Well, you, you have criteria in there for special exceptions. To answer his other question, you have special exception criteria, I think that works. Could be big, ugly and noisy, so. It's a good reason for a B C special exception. What about his comment about. Daycare and schools, should they be permitted in B C rather than accessory?
I think that makes sense. Is there accessory, accessory to what? If it's the purpose of it?
Well, with, well, with the daycare, accessory might mean it's associated with a business or a sports facility or whatnot. Versus a standalone. Versus a standalone privately run, which you only would permit right now in special civic. That wouldn't give a lot of options for somebody trying to well, put a daycare.
Well, but we have the special exception allowance.
In, in the residential district?
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that? I'm just trying to make sure we covered his comments. Goes good as is?
When I picture daycare or pre-K, I just picture a lot that's really fenced off and, you know, keep the kids safe. And if we're encouraging traffic and density, is that really a place to encourage little kids to be kept, be kept safe?
That's a good point, yeah.
It seems to run contrary. Though what about snows? I think the plan was to build school buildings on snows. So I think we're okay with that.
Yeah.
So it needs to be.
So is that a P?
Be permitted in snows.
For schools.
Okay.
Daycare, pre-K as well. Uh, no, I are accessory, accessory. Do we allow accessory pre-K? I mean, we have whatever programs going on. Sure.
Yeah, that would make sense. Yeah, the school's there, then. Did we decide on eliminating dormitories from VC? That was Bill's question, was it not?
He was asking whether they should be by right or accessory. And in my mind, if they're not accessory, they're lodging. I'm just having trouble thinking of when a dormitory would not be accessory is where you'd call it. Why would you call it a dormitory? Then it's lodging.
Though we do have dormitories as well on special civic.
No.
That's what BBPS is located on.
Is that accessory to something?
The school? Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to add that then as an accessory in special civic?
Yeah, yeah.
That's good to be thinking about uses that you have that you don't want to make not conforming in case they want to. This is kind of what we ran into last month, kind of getting on the toward 9:30 without touching the actual document, so.
That's so funny.
I guess so. Keeps us on track.
I have a question about dormitories, where, well, what are we doing with that word that's coming out of recreation and going someplace else? I'm a little confused on dormitories.
It's not.
Not in recreation.
Well, maybe now, I mean, I'm not looking at what you have now.
Well, that's what I see.
No, I think.
Do I have a bad list here?
It's, it's at the bottom of recreation?
Yeah, yeah.
Have we talked about moving it? I think we were just adding an accessory use by right under special civic for dormitories.
But should dormitories even be in recreation?
It's not listed now in recreation in the table that we're working with.
It should be listed in, under the recreation heading in the table. It is in mine, is that what you're asking?
It's not in mine. Oh, you mean in the recreation heading?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I wasn't with the right question.
Wasn't here anyway.
Yeah, should dormitory be in the recreation heading? Say no. It doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of ways to slice this and nothing is perfect, so where would you like to see it?
Well, when I think of a dormitory as like a school or actually the mountain, wanted to put a dormitory in for their workers.
Yeah, the reason it started out there, I think, was because you only talked about them in snows and being for the people that were taking part in the recreational programs, but
Yeah.
Where do you want to see it? Residential, is it?
Institution public.
How about there's an accessory uses on buildings category and it's accessory everywhere, so we could just move it there.
I like the institutional public.
Isn't it? Yeah.
Because it's either going to be the academy or something related to housing employee, employees for the resort or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, no, I was hearing you was, I was thinking districts, not.
So you move that around a far?
Okay.
What are we supposed to be reviewing right now?
I'm just wondering what next.
That's what I was doing.
I was just like, if you build this, just to make sure.
Okay.
Where dollars is.
Because I don't think, I didn't, I didn't think we got through yours, we think.
Oh, oh, we got through mine.
We were all the way through yours, okay.
Yeah.
I think that was all our bills except things that you've already talked about all the whole time, with getting the residential out of the commercial one.
Yeah, though.
That's just, you know, that's not.
Oh, I'm, was, is good, is a good point, so I just wanted to make sure we're through that when we get into the document.
It's a comment on the entire document. Just looking through the all of it, I'd say that your recommendations are reasonable and should be accepted.
Yeah, the, they're, they're the planning boards, we've been working for months. I started with the table of here's what you have now and to kind of highlight some inconsistencies and redundancies and over several meetings we've gotten. At this point, I think it does look pretty good.
I think you got it, you have some questions, certain points, but overall, it's what we've been talking about for the last several months.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I understand, but it was, the question was, what about the entire document? I'd say that the amendments to it, making a better document.
Yeah, but I missed the actual zoning ordinance. Like this is one little piece.
I don't understand that.
But we haven't gotten, we have, we have to get through.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm done with any comments.
Okay, good.
Shall we move on to the zoning ones?
If you think we can get
I think Bill's comment was, this incorporates, what you put in here incorporates what we discussed over many months and do we really need to hash out again every single change, not that the questions that you have associated with some of them, otherwise it stands.
We shouldn't be doing that at this point, but.
Yeah, hope not. We've had enough discussion.
But I didn't, you know.
You had a number of questions.
No, we answered the questions, I think, last time. I just wanted to make sure that people had a chance to read it through carefully and feel good about whatever you'd be saying.
You're talking about the 46 page document?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what we're, I think what, what I'm saying is, let's look at, we don't have to go through it necessarily page by page, just what people have, now that we reviewed it.
What are your comments, what are your final comments? To be able, yeah, to be able to feel good about it, to go to.
Exactly, thank you.
I've got a so on, on page four, on the three definitions. It makes it clear that the words building lot or premises shall be construed, it means must be construed, as though followed by the words or any portion thereof. And then, many times in the definitions, it'll say, for instance, number eight, building, um, a structure or part of it. And we need to go through and erase all the or part thereof in every definition, and it happens a lot. Because it's repetitive. I, I just think it's something like, we can't, it's just annoying that we say, this is what it means, and then we contradict ourselves by. So.
I'm not, I'm not sure I would recommend that because later in the document, every time you say building lot or premises, you're not going to see or any portion thereof. I don't think it's a bad thing to have that emphasis that you had in there.
You mean, I guess someone's reading a regulation, this goes back to the definition and doesn't look at the paragraph about definition?
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I, that's, you have it there, but I don't think, it didn't strike me as a bad thing that you had there.
We'll keep it in, okay. So for eight business complexes, did we agree that we're going to say a commercial building that contains more than one principal use?
That my note said a building that contains more than one non, non-residential slash business.
Yeah, you don't want to use business in the definition of business, so I think we'll use commercial.
It's the notes from last time you talked about it was non-residential business, but we can see commercial.
Don't understand what you mean.
Well, it's just bad practice to use in the definition of the word, the word that you're defining.
I see. Okay. I could agree with that.
It's in the business, it's the business.
Exactly, it's a pile of.
So and then you made some changes, when we, we did talk about this a little bit last, last month. The other change you made on that page was in the dormitory definition, I was to say occupant slash participants.
Number five.
In page five, on that same page, the definition of dormitory, you wanted to add students or staff to the definition.
Like program participants and staff, right?
Something like that.
So number nine, I might say an office open to the public for financial transactions as opposed to business transactions. Would go like to commercial then? Although it's not necessarily commercial, like a college or a school can have a business office. The DBS has a business office, I guess.
That's, it's not necessarily financial.
But it's, it's not commercial, but it is financial. Is it?
Is it always financial?
When is it not?
Well, a real estate office, I don't know, if I was trying to fight it being next door to me, and it said that, I'd argue.
Financial or administrative?
To not pass in money at the real estate office. I think that works if you added maybe administrative.
Yeah, financially and or administrative.
I could accept that. But I think you're right, using the term business to describe what's defined as business complex doesn't add anything to the definition.
Right. Yeah, I, I was still going to give the definition one more once over, what you had done with the uses.
Yeah, I had something on church, I would get rid of something that is built and installed or established to provide, just use spaces for worship.
So I've also got a comment on that, so can we say church or chapel? And the reason I bring that up is because there's a lot of activity going around the concept of a chapel, right, which is non-denominational, which is also potentially going to have commercial viability to expand to 12-month, you know, wedding industry, you know, here, but if we, I don't know, again, like if somehow, and maybe it's, to your point, you know, and it's not really a place of worship if it's being used solely for marriages, because there's non-worship or religious marriages. How do you think we could accommodate that, so?
Religious ceremonies?
Well.
Well, might, it might not be.
Built and installed or established, get rid of that for worship, spiritual care, individual meditation, I think all that's fine.
Well, that's, I think they're just two different things.
I'm just not here in a wedding chapel as being a church.
Yeah, church is one thing.
Okay, so, okay, fine, so maybe put another line in that's a chapel that can be used for all those same purposes, but also for non, you know, religious.
But I think the place you want to make sure it's covered is your use table and then, and then you add a definition.
Because you don't have it anywhere.
Right, by putting it in the definitions, you're not really doing anything, if it's not, if it's not in this use table somewhere.
Not applied somewhere.
These definitions should tie to the use table and make, maybe we should.
Yeah, no, I agree, I just want to make sure we get the definition right, that's what we're doing right now, right?
But when you say church in the use table, do you think you mean when you're trying to set your wedding chapel?
I'm actually just, just because there, there is activity on this right now and there is definitely within the community. When you say church, it's religious, it doesn't necessarily, you know, jive with everybody. That's why I was just saying like, the, the term chapel is what's being used and, and there's a nonprofit being set up around that purpose and that's what it's being called, so it's just, again, being pragmatic about this, like somewhere in here, we should have something that actually says what we're building.
Like what under, on the use table, under institution public, would the civic centers, churches, church chapels be added to that?
Yeah, I mean chapel is just a different.
If that's the, yeah.
So I think it's a good catch that we power you to. So I think it's a good catch, that we power you to, um, add chapel to the table and figure out where we want to allow it.
But in the definition too, I mean, do we wanna say, you know, as, as part of that definition for use for, uh, marital ceremonies or whatever? I agree, yeah, I, I get that point, definitely, you know, put that in the use table, but I just wanna cover that, because that's really gonna be the, how the operating costs will be covered for it, why not put it in there?
Yeah, no, I think adding, adding chapel to the use table ends with the definitions, it's a separate element, makes sense.
Or if, if you wanna treat it the same as civic centers and churches, you could just include it in the definition. Like, include in church, to say includes chapels for marriage or other ceremonies.
Yeah, no, and that's a good idea, to the history, as Mark has actually explained, that, you know, some of the planning over time has been, you know, it won't be a church, it'll be a, yeah, chapel-like looking, that's also used for other community gatherings, so.
Yeah, we, we could just put that in, we could put it in either the church or civic center definition. Because I think what, I mean, that's what they're trying to be, that category is trying to be places people gather, that's not to watch a sports event.
For social infrastructure, as I keep hearing.
Yeah, right. Yep.
That covers a lot of territory.
Um, so chapel under church, and then we can just leave civic cent- centers, common churches, and chapels just within that.
Yeah, the definitions is very important, this is, this is where you decide what all these things on the table mean.
I had to comment on directional signs. It makes more sense to just get rid of that ending part, to arrive at said business, because directional signs aren't necessarily towards businesses. So just a sign that includes the name as well as an indication of the direction to travel.
Yes, I agree, and that brings it more in line with the. I was directed not to do anything with the sign.
It's just definitions.
Same. That's my path last.
On the next page, page six, with the green belt, um, I would add, after seeing that B, for example, baking trails and picnic areas, just because we're getting rid of that language in there, I thought that was really helpful, to have some examples.
Say that again, what's zoning map B?
I don't know. I thought.
The current, the latest zoning map calls itself zoning map B. No idea why.
Yeah, the one that was handed out at the last meeting.
Does that?
No, it's zoning map A.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's the title. You're, you're talking about this.
Yes.
I don't think that's the title, the title is zoning map one of the valley.
Okay, that, that makes it more generic, we don't have to change it.
I don't know why Fire Affairs has that one, yeah, but it's, is it also behind you? Is that a big bird nose on the map? I'll ask Mark.
Presumably there was an A at one point.
Well, didn't you guys do a rezoning? I thought, I thought I heard someone say a few years ago, you guys did a rezoning, so maybe that was A, and then when they did the rezoning, there's B.
Yeah, Mark, Mark said something about needing to do something with a map team, I don't know, I'll ask him about that. But can you tell me again what you wanted to add to that sentence and where?
Um, for example, baking trails or picnic areas? That's actually in the zoning regulation paragraph that we're eliminating, and I thought that was useful to kind of think about what is in the blue. Thought we should, where, um, you know, we're eliminating sections one, two, three, four, I think it's in section one.
Not eliminating the purpose.
Yep.
No, so.
It's got a line through it.
Yeah, where?
All right, so.
And the green belt, page six.
Yeah.
Yeah, that shouldn't, that shouldn't.
It's page twenty-one.
That shouldn't come off. I don't think that would be.
This is a table of content, green belt, page nineteen.
Yeah, well, it's on page one, um.
Yeah, I see it's listed in my draft amendment, language is coming out, and I don't think it should, I don't think I noticed it had a purpose.
Well, the real question is, we don't say purpose for anything else, why are we saying purpose for green belt?
Maybe that, maybe that's why, what I was thinking that I did that was to make it consistent.
Yeah, I mean, we, because we do talk about purposes in the master plan, we.
So you'd agree with it coming out, but.
Yeah, because you don't see any other purpose for any other district.
That must have been why I did it.
But I mean, I like having the examples, so we're gonna be defining it here. If you did, indeed, too.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's not really a district thing, we didn't think so about, so it's good that it seems. Actually, this is why we should go over here, um, on page nine, number seventy-one, we have road, right of way. We also talk about in the document, road traveled way. What is the difference, and why don't we find that?
The right way is what's owned by the entity that owns it all, the traveled way is.
On either side of the road, right?
Yeah, so.
Like where the signs.
Typically fifty feet. And the traveled way is what it says, it's a traveled way.
So cars go.
Yeah. It's usually, I mean, if it's a paved road, it's usually from the edge of the pavement to the edge of the pavement.
So maybe we should define road traveled way? Because in some of the language in the zoning, we distinguish between.
I know, that's because you don't know where the right of way is on some of the roads, right? That was my understanding, that, to be seen, where you didn't know where the right of way was, you went with the traveled way.
Makes sense.
Yeah, but I think you don't.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, because. Yeah, but anyways, I think we define traveled way.
But are the maps geographically referenced? I mean, it's pretty common to look at, I mean, I, I haven't zoomed in with that question in mind in yours, I think, but probably if you did, put the orthophoro behind it, you'd probably see some misalignment, where roads aren't exactly in the center of there, right? That's usually why you see reference to traveled way and. That's what Mark explained at the last meeting, why some of them are one way and some are another.
So are we gonna add the road traveled way definition?
I made an order that.
Um, number seventy-three, school, um, I might change it to say, a building whose principal use is for education or instruction, but designed, constructed, or used for, it just seems kind of unnecessary. And do we really need to say general?
Yes, because you were trying to differentiate between a sports institute and a school. For, was it the snows district? That you want to allow a sports institute, but not a school? But now you put schools in snow.
Well, I think it's about a comment, what is general education?
Well, that was, you would, you put that in there to differentiate between, I don't know, there were places you felt you only wanted recreation, sports-related instruction versus general education school. Now that you're adding schools, the snows, I'm not sure that matters. Although, you're.
I do want to.
You have sports institutes some places still that you don't have general education school. But I think that's what its purpose is.
But I think you were after something like scholastic education rather than general education. You have another word?
Well, the sports institutes, I thought.
Right, I get it, I understand what you mean.
The sports institutes.
It's a redundant word or a meaningless word.
Except that, well, come up with a better one, that, that was your goal, I thought, was to.
Yeah.
Now, keep in mind that you've defined sports institute, that, that may also include academic education of athletes.
Right, but we're talking about buildings' principal use is academic education.
Okay, isn't that where dot net?
As opposed to sports education?
Okay. I'll have to look that up.
So under, um, page ten, sports institute? I thought you just eliminated the first part, you just said it's a facility which provides with, you know, running to repeat your back, sports.
Right, I didn't notice that you had.
And then, under eight, seven, sports facility? I might trim it to say, in indoor, outdoor, enclosed areas such as a court, comma, field, comma, or ring used for sports. And it's really an area, literally.
Since you're gonna make the skills venue be a separate line in the use table, do you wanna take shooting facilities out of sports facility? Do you want to, you want a special exception of shooting on the line?
Yeah. Just from a public safety standpoint.
You don't want to put the daycare as a.
So I just had a question about water feature. I don't know, anyways, um, I didn't understand it at the end. It's, it's a piece of recreational equipment associated with a proper pool, which makes sense, using water to enhance the activities such as a splash pad, but then it says for pool. So just get rid of.
For a pool, yeah.
Or, I mean, that waiting pool, or.
Well, one or the other.
I think it might have been slide. Were you talking about splash pads or what are slides at a hotel?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, that's actually what was supposed to be there. Like, the forum motel is there, and mean, they put, sorry, picture, they put some kind of plastic down their little basement and run the hose on it, and then they have a water slide for the kids, right, but it's not walk. And I think that's what you were trying to get at. It's not a walk. So I'm thinking you probably do need, um, next week's meeting to do the rest of this, because it's kind of off. Well, it's up to you, I mean, I could, I could just think backwards from time. I could give another half hour today, I'm not sure if that's enough to get through this.
I don't have very much more. Does anybody else have a lot more?
Okay, I think you might make it a half an hour and then let's do it.
Me. I'll look through mine and then you can go to this. Second hour, please, small. So on page fourteen, five, three, lot coverage, instead of such, like, a single family or two-family dwelling, but it looked like you were gonna, instead of saying lot coverage for single family or two-family dwelling, because that didn't make sense.
Okay.
Say it again?
I crossed out such and probably should have added a.
I see.
So. All I have to say is, I was surprised, I didn't realize that all homes built in this town had to be free for recycling. all I have to say is I was surprised. I didn't realize that all homes built in this town had to be three stories high. Oh.
Where are you reading?
Yeah, yeah, that's what it says. Wow, yeah, we um so.
Yeah, so you mean maximum.
No.
Yeah.
No more than, does it say no more than?
Yeah, there's a missing word. There's a missing word. You mean maximum.
That's that's what it is. Okay, so it was.
Could be a maximum.
And I think we should probably just word search that because I think it says that everywhere. Yeah, but the add maximum. Because I think it just says shall be three stories higher than.
I'm sort of asking you guys to make sure you carefully read this because my assignment was helping you with the density issue. That was what I was hired to do. And we picked up a lot of things along the way of that. And the first round of amendments, I should have caught that a couple of years ago when I did some amendments for you in kind of a cleanup mode.
Okay, so I'm twenty-two. You said that you had an issue with the way not measuring the sports institute. So ignore everything that's there.
Well, you gotta replace this with a table anyway, but yeah. It's just the name of the plan. It'll say uses authorized by the US Fire Service consistent with in the name of their plan. So it's not going to change a lot from what I wrote there.
Yeah, we got more sensibles or whatever. Right, so that was all I had. So I was just going with the bill stuff. He's pretty detailed with that.
His first comment about principal use, it's just not done that way. And I, you don't usually hear me say that because I'm not afraid to try new things, but I've just never seen anybody define a principal use rule of percentage. I think that could just lead to problems. Just don't, I think it's clear. If it's not clear, it doesn't get issued the permit and they go to design or permission. And I think that's why you're on zone.
Okay.
We covered the second one. You caught that as well. I had to have this, we talked about this issue with the setback type ratio.
Is it still hanging up there on the zone?
I have the same question about it. I had asked what it meant.
Here is, so it's building height C. Two, I I.
Accessory buildings in improvement should be subject to the setback type ratio required for principal buildings. I asked you what that meant. Nobody seemed to knew about it. You didn't get the you didn't, your, my direction from you wasn't to eliminate it. But I I don't know what it means either. I had asked that.
What I had in the old definition or version that was now eliminated. Which was, that's a great question.
Well, Mark had, I think it was Mark had some kind of answer about. I mean, if I was the zoning officer interpreting it, I would say that accessory building doesn't have to meet the same setback. That if the building's thirty behind thirty feet back and the accessory building was ten feet high, it only has to be ten feet back. Is that what you want?
No.
I wouldn't think so either. I would think you'd want everything to meet the setback, period. I'd like to see it gone. I'm with Bill on it. Rather than defining it, getting rid of it. Nobody knows what it's there or what it means.
Did you not make a comment in one of the previous meetings about what other towns do with the setback provision?
Yeah, I've never seen anything like this.
What do other towns do?
Other towns require the same setbacks for accessory buildings as the primary building. And it's never, I've never seen it based on height except with a tower. Telecommunications tower, wind tower, so that it has a fall zone that's on your property.
Are we thinking that maybe we don't want accessory buildings that are as tall as the main building? I think that's what the thought was getting at.
I I just don't read it that way.
I can think of one property where they have basically a second house. This isn't, it doesn't matter. It's the same, right?
No, I wouldn't want to put that restriction on.
Yeah.
Landowner.
And as long as the setbacks are fine.
Yeah.
So yeah.
Isn't it the objective to have consistent setbacks throughout the town?
I think it was, I thought it was Mark that knew what that what that meant, but it didn't make sense to me at the time, but it was taken out of out the H D R. That part of our discussion, but not that.
So do we really think it just should be that they should be subjected to the same requirements required or same height requirements as principal buildings?
You 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 had me take that sentence out of the H D R. Maybe you also meant to have me take it out of the H D R. You guys were supposed to do it. I think you just need to take it out.
But the setback to height ratio is still there as number three in your H D R. Each fifty.
Oh, was it also in four? I crossed out there.
So we use it a lot, even if we don't know what it is.
I would take it out. I think we, nobody knows what it's for or whether it's about setback for heights.
But I guess we should be clear though on what we think of, what we think should be the requirements for height for accessory buildings and improvements.
Well, I've never heard of I've never heard of regulating the height of an accessory building different because the justification for the height regulation is generally fire safety and the ability of your fire department to reach, not before. So it'd be hard to argue that.
So should we, should it, does it need to be stated? Does it need to be under the same regulations as what's required for principal buildings?
I think principles should just come out of that, the statements about building height.
Would you say the maximum building height shall be?
That, yeah, that would be more typical.
That simplifies into, yeah.
I'll just make a note to do that throughout. My bet is this hasn't been being enforced because nobody knows what it means. So I'll make a note to do that throughout. When I'm going through to make sure that it's clear that you don't have to have three stories.
Yeah.
But in H D R, there are actually different kinds of buildings of different kinds of hyperphones.
Yeah, so probably add accessory buildings to four. Right? So those aren't forty feet high.
Yeah.
Accessory building can be within the twenty foot setback, right?
Not. No. It shouldn't be only.
I had a question on that. No principal building should be located within twenty feet of any other lot line and no accessory building within six feet of any other lot.
Oh, right. You have a difference on that.
Thinking of the two shed that's in the corner. Not within twenty feet of within, yeah, the twenty foot.
So going back to the setback to height ratio, do you think that's why that was in there?
The six feet?
Do you think it was just poorly worded and it was trying to say something about it can be six feet, but you need to be shorter? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah. Some way to get some limitation or some standards for what an accessory building might mean.
What would be the height of a typical like garden shed or?
Eight feet, ten feet?
Yeah. Typically floors tend to be. That's why I think that thirty-five feet is wrong. There's something that's not right there. Building code issues. And I thought it was forty feet highest point. It's three floors, each floor is about ten feet. And in the roof attic area is another. I think there's a limit of forty feet for any building in a valley, but we should really table this information because I think we need to get some code issues correct on that. A lot going on there.
Well, I think what you want to do is make sure that your fire chief has a copy of it for the public hearing and get that. Uh, but in terms of the setback and the accessory structure, what what if, would it be simpler or would it make sense to say that accessory buildings not exceeding ten feet height can be six feet instead of twenty on the lot line? Is that really what the kind of thing that this was trying to get at?
It's a good question. Nobody here seems, nobody knows.
Kind of looks like when you.
They were trying to get at accessory building not.
Not being as, not being thirty-five feet high, but.
Right, they went into twenty foot setback.
Right, but just trying to think, you know, let's try to think of an easier way to say it that you'll know in clear what it means.
Well, you could say accessory building such as a shed. Quite a define what what accessory building fits.
I think you need to put a, I think you need to put a height limit on what's gonna be, what can be six feet. That's not this big ratio statement.
John, in your experience, what are we talking?
Ten feet.
Say someone has a shed. What kind of shed are you gonna have? Just a shed for equipment?
What's okay to be six, think about your own lot.
Yeah.
What what are you okay with seeing six feet from your lawn?
And and how many, how many? Yeah, but what if someone puts, I may say for a height restriction, but someone puts ten in the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, ten right now.
Yeah, right. So isn't it just the height restriction that we're looking for?
It looked like a storage facility.
Do you really want them six feet? I mean, or just should the same setback apply everything?
Well, step back from lot line. Well, and I find it interesting that when the H D R above L D R, then it's back to the thirty-five foot.
Yeah, that's throughout.
But L D R and L D R, it can be within six foot, but H D R and L D R has to be thirty-five.
What has to be thirty-five between?
Between H D R and L D R and
The principal building?
Any, there'd be no building in H D R within thirty-five feet of their lot line.
I'm just trying to think what other than a shed would be an accessory in an L D R. I mean, what other construction would you have as a building?
You can call anything accessory.
What we, uh, wait, we're talking, it says building here in this sense.
Right, but like an in-law closet.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
A non-attached garage.
Maybe we get back to the question I was asked. Maybe we want to look at the six feet setback for accessory. Because you can build a garage in an apartment.
That there are.
There's one on the market like that.
Throughout the town that are within, that are about six feet from the lot line. If you walk around the town, you're just aligned that garages aren't so situated. They're already there.
Yeah, I've seen that propane tanks are not buildings, but propane tanks with far back to there. Yeah.
So what's the best way to move forward on this?
I don't know. I'm a little bit concerned about the
I'm just answering the question.
I'm a little bit concerned about the scope of the project and where you kind of draw the lines so that you can move forward with this coming town meeting.
Right. We just table this for discussion.
Because for this section, there's so many questions, you'd really need to table it.
Finish everything else out?
You have to press in here and ask me some questions.
So it might be next year. I mean, really, that surprise.
Can we put that on our tickler file?
It might make sense to just look at all the different height and setback and other.
All right, so we're gonna put on the tickler files, setbacks.
So meanwhile, we're gonna leave that sentence in that you don't know what it is.
Yeah.
In case it's doing something. And we'll just take out the one I took out that was we're done in.
Interpret it as as necessary if you arrive.
We. Yeah, I'm just concerned about the scope just keeps getting bigger and and you get more behind and. But my feet doesn't get any bigger, so.
We're not doing it on purpose.
Oh, I know. It's just
You come across other things.
It's hard. I mean, I come across other things that that I want you to, it's just like that.
Perhaps next year.
Appreciate everybody's so much up to you. Yes, it is complicated. You think that the zoning ordinance would be quite straightforward? It's very complicated.
So I'm gonna put back principal building height on page thirteen too because
We don't know.
You're keeping in this height ratio setback thing, so they can either keep principal in there.
You can build a garage with an apartment on top.
So crossing out to do that.
That's the right question, why six feet never was put in when you're young.
You're right. We probably should have a table for all this and get rid of all this language. Because it's, it just would be so much easier to have a table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Show us the table.
Language drives you crazy.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I gave you a. I, yeah, I gave you a table just for discussion purposes, it wasn't for incorporating in here, but you have, you have one from supply. At least to get you started, so I'm just trying to backtrack and make sure I. I knew my notes, right, so. Keep, that's okay. I'll put that back.
Tara, what did you?
Let me just kit up here. I'll put that back. The maximum height I'm gonna fix. So it's not saying you have to be these doors, and you know that was wrong?
This is the table, yes.
Probably.
Yeah.
Did you mention earlier that there is a provision in the ordinance about the fall radius of a tower?
That, that's a typical thing to have, that you were asking how setbacks are usually dealt with? And I was saying that they're generally the same for everything, except a tower will usually say it has to be like 125% of its height back to the property.
Does this exist now in our ordinance document?
I can't tell you off the top of my head, because I'm working with one on.
I don't remember seeing anything like that.
Yeah.
Is it worth including at 6?
I don't, I don't know, I'd have to look and see what you have for telecommunication, but I wasn't. Just so you, so you know, because I know you came in the process late, that what I was hired to do was help you implement the Village Descent Study and make, make your BC and C1 more dense. And we did that by looking at the land use and make sure that you were really encouraging. Things that were gonna lead to that being high density and discouraging things that were losing a lot of weight and really separating residential out so that you could use up for the highest of its use. Everything else kind of grew out of there. That and the lighting were the two things that we started with to implement the Village Descent Study. So I don't remember actually right now if I look, if you have telecommunications, but if you did, I'm sure I didn't. But I'm happy to come back next year, join you guys, and I love the drive, it's beautiful.
Yeah, that's a good reason for doing it.
We need the help.
All right, so I think I've caught up and undone those notes.
We do need the help.
So a lot of bills, a lot of bills had to do with setbacks.
Right? I agree with what he's saying, we had a big discussion about that when we traded the Snow's Mountain Special District. That dormitory use has to be participants in the full-time programs and their supervisors.
And that, and you've dealt with that in the definition of dormitory now, I think. Staff, yeah.
Do you think we need to say full-time?
Do you want to be that?
That probably doesn't make sense, as long as it's program participants.
I think what Bill was after was he didn't want the dormitories to turn into a large scale.
Right.
Wait, you're gonna add the term program participants or staff? To, to definition of dormitory. I mean, that whole, that zoning district language was written for one entity, and that's not really a great idea, right, zoning. I, I just can't see, is this a problem for people trying out things as parking spaces that aren't accessible?
Well.
Uh, it actually is.
In, in developments that have come through, some of those, we've been, had some concern that parking wouldn't be sufficient in actuality. Because even those garages were counted as parking spaces. That the second parking space is right behind it, and then there's no way to have shared parking, you know, for when.
Snow's Mountain Road parking issues over there.
So like if one unit is used more, there's no overflow parking, it would block somebody else's garage. It was, it was, not necessarily for single-family homes, but for multifamily dwellings.
Is there something we could do with the definition of parking space? On the top of PUD, that would address it sometime? Just because I'm not sure, there's another, I don't like to put regulations in the definitions as you might know by now, but. Not sure where else to. He didn't give us any clues to where he's looking on some of these.
I'm looking at old page 24. So you're thinking it's part of the definition of parking space? Do you add access?
Or is this somewhere at pages 28 or 29 that? I guess that's probably.
Parking and loading would find a second B.
What if it was at the end of this JJ parking spaces be arranged so that no part of any vehicle overhangs of a driveway or? Would it go in there?
Or is it covered in DD, the required number of parking spaces may be higher than indicated when judged by the planning board?
Well, you have that flexibility.
Right, I mean, so is that enough so that we can judge? So that leaves us the ability to sometimes count those parking spaces as parking spaces and sometimes not count. Is that enough, or, I mean?
Yes, I think it sounds like the ability to individually review.
Yeah.
Okay.
So DBR there, what else?
You good? Hopefully it doesn't happen.
I'm sure it will, is that?
Yeah.
Well, there are a lot of reasons for allowing time for two public hearings, so it might be things that you pick up on that, that you wish you had done.
We have one other thing for architectural standards, do you know what that is? Is that in the head?
Used to be page 33, so it's right in front of. And.
And then, yes. Now at the bottom of page 36.
This is something that I. Your attorney and I have different views on, and when I did your cleanup a couple years ago, I, I questioned that this is legitimately in a zoning ordinance.
The whole section.
Yeah, and your attorney stood behind it, so.
So he's talking about subsection, section three?
Yeah.
And subsection three, second sentence.
Guessing that some of this is in covenant with your deeds or? That's really where it would be more convenient.
Many of that. Doesn't seem to be more than planning boards.
Yeah, it's definitely planning board.
I don't know, what planning board authority?
No, I thought we, you know, we don't approve those. We just make recommendations, so isn't this actually accurate with that? Planning Board has the authority to grant exceptions.
Because we don't see all plans for single-family homes, so how do we know?
Right, it would have to be.
Be consulted.
Permanent and.
The way it would be, I don't know, your purview would be if it wasn't single family and was something that needed site plan.
It says all building. Yeah, I also have the approval of the roof placement for the readings of the relaxed for a special purpose building.
You know, if this was really trying to be part of zoning and fit how you think about zoning, then. Why wouldn't it be going as a zoning board for a special exception? I mean, they're, they're really the board that makes those judgments. That's not really a ZAR, it's like what we're planning, what power. It's really a special exception kind of thing.
This relates to what, what's in here called a special purpose building.
So, so you could say the planning board is part of site plan review, then if it's never gonna apply to a single family.
Well, here it says for a special purpose building.
Right, so let's, let's assume that doesn't mean the, the tools shed, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Why not, then, then just, then specify the planning board as part of site interview. And that, I'd just like to make sure that if you're assigning something to a board, it raises to some power that board has under the law. Maybe that's what he was thinking, as part of site kind of view. And that's where you, you want to have that flexibility in site kind of view.
So if a homeowner tried to have a flat roof, for instance, on. They would just have to go for the zoning board and just wouldn't say anything here.
Right. And I can't think of any justification for the zoning board to grant a variance on that.
Dumb idea.
I mean, they'd have, but they'd have to be able to say they couldn't use the property otherwise to get a, legitimately get a variance.
There is at least one large house with a flat roof in the town. Japanese-style building on. Over Path Road. It exists. And it has to be shovelled every winter.
Special purpose building.
That, that'll be interesting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's dangerous, yeah.
But anybody made reference here to the, to the Board of Selectment, but I don't see anything in here that makes reference to. So why did he raise that objection?
He's saying it shouldn't be with the Board of Selectment, it should be the planning.
Reading the paragraph, I didn't see any mention of the Board of Selectment.
Oh, it's in the second sentence. Number three, subsection number three.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll just change that to say, planning board as part of site kind of review.
Okay.
So I think that's all the bills, does anyone else have any comments? So are we, do we have work for next meeting, or do you think then we should go over your changes?
I think that's a good idea, I think, I, I don't have time to make them until the day before, that's first, the next day I have available, so I can't send them out in advance, but I can highlight them in yellow as I do them, so that we can just kind of go to the changes quickly during the meeting. Let you have that look at them before you vote to go to public hearing, and, and I'll also, I wanted to get, to run by you how to break it up for the different amendments, because I think you should be specific on that at that meeting too. My thinking is that those rezonings should be three separate ones, as I laid them out in the notes, because if you lump together the two that are down here and you decide to only do one, then that requires another hearing just for that, right? If you have them as separate, three separate amendments, you could choose not to go forward with one of them and not have another public hearing. I would put all the non-substantive ones together in one amendment. The topics that we dealt with separately should need to be there, all lighting, the PUD section, parking, those things should be three separate. And then I'd like to put basically all the changes in, to do with uses and definitions all in one, so that that has to pass as a whole, and you don't fall apart by having some of it but not the rest, and it's inconsistent and doesn't hang together anymore.
Yeah.
Kind of all or nothing with that, hold your breath and hope for the best, but you'd hate to have some uses passed, but not the definitions that were put on. So that gives you one, two, three, four, five. Eight amendments, approximately, together. Is that gonna be okay?
You're gonna just, yes, I'll form it, or?
Yeah.
Yes. I think it'll be fine.
Okay.
Do I have your motion to?
Do you have anything else?
Anything else on the agenda?
You can make a motion, but I can head out.
Yes. You're free. Thank you very much, Tara, that was awesome. I felt like you guys.
Yeah.
It was a good meeting today.
Eight o'clock next Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
Finish it.
Yeah, Perry will be here, I can't. So, it's, it's no new business on the agenda. Meeting reports? Yeah, so the, uh, in his last meeting, we're having a budget issue, and we did get approval from the Senate. Thank you. Thank you. We received approval from the Select Board that we should continue forward with doing the sign, and I'm sure you've all seen Perry happening, so that, that part of it moving forward. And there was general consensus that we really do need to try to get more bang for our buck and do larger projects that will bring in more contractors willing to bid on them, and in the long run save the town a lot more money in doing the projects. So there is a balance still left from what was appropriated at town meeting, and in discussion with Wood and Wood, we'd like them, you know, to continue working on a family of signs, and they did come up with two potential signs for the entryway. Sorry, these are small, you don't see them, but this one would replace the listing, listing signs that are there, just so Town of Waterville Valley and Waterville Valley Ski Resort. And this one would basically essentially slide right into the same size as a white rainbow colored coming down from the ski, that was really illegible. There's discussion, which I have not heard the results of yet, as to cost sharing with the ski resorts, yeah.
Well, I talked with Mark, oh, I did, after voting. And he said two things, one is, the mountain has agreed to pay for that sign, the one that's the first one. But to eliminate the Town of Waterville Valleys this way, portion of it, because when you get to the sign and see the ski area this way, you're gonna see the gigantic
The one behind.
Town of Valley, Waterville Valley, this way sign already there, so it didn't make sense.
Okay.
So it, it makes much more sense for them to pay for that entire sign, because it's really all about them.
Right.
Excellent, good update.
Also, I don't think they're gonna light it, because I don't think they have the right time to do so. And was there a special on this one as well?
That was just given, just like So in theory, you know, the structure is there, it should be pretty basic, and just makes use of the icons, obviously that duplicate and, and then a clear way back to ninety-three. So that's our next recommendation to the Select Board, and we haven't heard back yet, as far as
I don't think so, but I think it's great that it's gone through.
Yeah, next to last meeting. Mark is having a brief number of something.
Any other business news now?
I have a quick question, I'm looking to do we actually have a zoning board? We have a planning board, the Board of Selectment, we have the zoning board?
Yep.
I heard the names once, I didn't.
Yeah, they, they only need when they have to need it, so that's
So that's all the information that I can get from you.
I can find out for you and email you. Yeah, I'll, I'll ask Mark.
We wouldn't want to guess, because now they changed since the last time.
Yeah.
It may be in the report from last December.
I think it's on the website?
It's probably on the website too. That probably will be posted.
So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All set? All right, we adjourned.
So Wendy, is it still planned that the signs are gonna be done for like back rooms?
They're out there doing the grumming, excuse me.
It's funny, like those additional signs, because I was complaining to him.
Yeah.
I'm like, it's, even though you can see how they're clearing, that you're gonna be able to see the big Waterville Valley, how many times I go to ski mountain almost every day to find out, how many people come up like looking for a wedding or something and say, you know, is this where things are?